Good evening, I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee at order. Role call?
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Talamy.
Here.
Alderman Suback.
Here.
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Pizik. Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Kneipp.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 13th, 2006. Do you have a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the first item that we have tonight is a report and recommendation. This is business item, it's a two lot subdivision, 146 seater. The petitioner and owner, Mike Ronte, requests a two lot subdivision of a property located at the southwest corner of Sunnyside and Carol Lane to create two lots of record from the existing single lot of record. Tonight, when you walked in, you received a blueprint or map of the area. And I'll ask Roger, Roger, are there any issues, concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, there are no issues, no variations are requested. This is a straightforward re-subdivision going from a single lot of record to two lots of record. And this is located, as you can tell, on the corner of Sunnyside in Cedar. And the developer is proposing to build a one new single-family detached residence. And he is going to do some renovation work on the existing structure.
Okay, no, it's, the surrounding area is all R2, I mean.
Correct.
And this will comply with the R2?
Absolutely. And the lot that will be facing Carol Lane will be actually sort of like an extension of the west side of Carol Lane where it comes and turns into Sunnyside. So, in other words, the developer is going to put up a similar type of home as is throughout the Via Cara subdivision.
Okay. So, I understand he needs no variances or anything with this?
That is correct, no variances are sought.
Anybody, Alderman Shaki?
I'd like to check your terminology. You said he's going to be tearing down and rebuilding the house? And he's been also going to be doing some reconstructioners? I don't, it sounds like you're saying you're going to build something, but you're going to redo something as well.
Well, I'll try and clarify that for you, Alderman Shaki. The existing single-family structure that's there currently is going to be renovated. And a brand-new single-family residence is going to be constructed at the corner at Carol Lane and Sunnyside.
So, the map we have in front of us, or the diagram we have in front of us, is what's there presently?
Yes, the one page has the existing. And on the reverse side is the proposed two-lot subdivision.
And it doesn't show where the houses will be or anything else on the reverse side?
No, not at this time. But it will have to comply with all bulk regulations, not only for our zoning ordinance, but also it will have to comply with all of our building codes and other city ordinances.
And the one lot will be only 69.18 feet wide?
69.18 at the narrow west portion. But that is because this is a, this is a corner lot. And his front yard is actually going to be along Cedar Avenue.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you just clarify for me, in an R2, what is the required watt width lot?
Well, in the R2, it would have to be 80 feet. But, as I said, this one is a corner lot. And the frontage will actually be along Carol Lane.
Facing?
So, they do meet that requirement. These details were all worked out at the Building Department as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm really going to vote no tonight, just err on the side of question. This is the first time I'm seeing the diagram. I usually like to go by with the picture and see what it's going to look like. I see that they're going to, now I understand he's going to split the lot, keep the house. But I see the garages away from the house, it looks like it detached. And, you know, I'm not clear now, what's going to happen with the garage? Is that going to move over? What is going to happen with the garage?
The existing three-car garage is going to be removed along with the existing shed and any other existing concrete in that area in order to make sure that everything is in compliance with our lot coverage.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Just to clarify, again, Roger, because you said Carol Lane at one point, then the map shows Cedar Avenue.
Yeah.
Because I thought the width requirements were, again, 80. But because he's on a corner, he can have the house facing either way.
Yes, it's Cedar Avenue in the plat book and on this proposed plat. But it's actually, it actually does become Carol Lane.
Right. Actually, I think the Villa Cara subdivision is R3 zoning when we approved that, which actually allowed for, I think, about 65-foot lots. So, this lot is actually larger, I think, in size than what might be in the Villa Cara, unless I'm mistaken.
It's going to fit in exactly with what's surrounding it.
Right, and so, my only question is, are we forcing, does he want to face the house on, because now he's going to have kind of the house facing on Carol Lane? Are zoning requirements forcing him to do that? Because would he rather have two houses facing Sunnyside and have his driveway be off of Sunnyside so that he'd have a 69-foot watt lot that's that wide? And he'd place the house somewhere 25 feet back from that? Otherwise, he's going to kind of along and shell a lot versus a, so, I don't know if we're forcing his hand.
No, no, we're not forcing his hand. Mr. Ronte has wanted to have the new structure face Carol Lane, sort of as an aesthetic, a more aesthetic look as you pull into Via Cara subdivision.
I see, okay. Because either way, to me, I think it's acceptable. Because I think, again, in the Villa Cara subdivision, most of the lots under there are smaller than this lot, this new proposed lot anyways.
Anybody else? Seeing no other questions. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by Michael Ronte to a two-lot subdivision of property located at the southwest corner of Sunnyside and Carol Lane to create two lots of record from an existing single lot of record. It's at 146 Cedar.
Second.
And a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, moving on. The next item we have changes to ZBA procedures. And I guess this is where we have Mary here to, and I'll ask Frank Williams, the city manager, first to say a few words.
Yes, we thought we would have some of the policies and procedures for the ZBA here to begin the discussion. However, we're going to have to do some more work and research on that. Our city attorney, Mary Dixon, is here to talk about the 75% rule, which was requested by members of the council as far as an explanation, which is part, determines when the ZBA gets involved or not. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mary.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I've handed out to all the members of the council a memorandum on permitted uses, or as we like to call it, the 75% rule. I understand that there have been some questions from individual council members. Because this rule is, when you first read it a couple of times, you can tell it had to have been written by an attorney, because it is hard to understand the first couple of times you read it. Just to keep you guys all guessing. What the 75%, what we call 75% rule does is, it does allow some of the of-record substandard lots in the city of Wooddale be recognized as permitted under the zoning code. The 75% rule is found in Section 10.107 of your zoning code, which is Chapter 10 of the municipal code. And it provides essentially that if there was a single lot or parcel of land in one ownership, which was of record at the effective date of this ordinance, and it was not thereafter held in contiguous ownership, meaning it wasn't held in ownership with a neighboring contiguous lot, and it doesn't meet minimum lot width or area, it can still be a permitted use if the yard or usable open space is not less than 75% of the minimum required dimensions. So, to help make this rule a little bit more understandable, my example is that you have a lot of record, that's a requirement. You have to be a lot of record prior to the adoption of the ordinance.
Q, define what a lot of record is.
It is a lot that's recognized by the city of Wooddale as existing. It's platted and it exists. It's recorded in the recorder's office. We have a number of lots in Wooddale that are lots of record, they're platted lots, but they don't fit the zoning district that was applied to those lots. We've, and you guys, I know you've had to deal with some of these lately.
Can an unincorporated lot be a lot of record? If you have somebody who's in corporate limits of Wooddale but never annexed in?
Yes, you can still be a lot of record. And so, what this allows is, for example, if you are a lot of record and were a lot of record prior to the adoption of the ordinance, and it wasn't held in contiguous ownership with another individual, for example, you're in an R1 district. Well, the R1 district in Wooddale requires a minimum 100-foot width at the building line with minimum side yards, if not less than 10% of the width, or 10 feet, whichever's less, applying, we know that that's R1. Now, taking the two examples, you have a Lot A, it's 92 feet in width at the building line. Lot A would be a permitted, recognized, usable lot. You could build on that because it's not less than 75% of the minimum requirement in an R1 district. 75% of the minimum would mean a permitted lot in R1 could not be smaller than 75 feet at the building line. This, if you're less than 75 feet at the building line, you're not a permitted, you're not a permitted lot, and you would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for variances to lot width, to building structure on that lot. So, for example, then, if you're 92 feet in width, and you come in and you're in that R1 area, you bring in a building plan to the community development department, Mr. Noick and his employees, his staff, look at the development, they can make the determination in their office to grant building permits on the lot. If you're a Lot B, which is my other example, and you're only 70 feet in width at the building line, notwithstanding the fact that you're a lot of record, you're not a, what we would call an immediately buildable lot in the city of Wooddale, because you don't fit within the zoning classifications of that district. You would have to apply for variances to lot width and variances, no doubt, to side yard, because now you can't be recognized under the zoning code. So, what this, what this really allows, the 75% rule is a very good rule for the city to have. It allows many of the lots that are lots of record but not fitting within the zoning code that, in which they're located, it allows those lots to be built on. I would hope that that explains a little bit better. I think, Roger, if you want to add anything to it, I know Roger's had to explain this on a couple of occasions to the, to other, you know, members of the ZBA, because it is confusing. But I will say, if a lot fits the 75% rule, you'll never see it, because that'll be dealt with in a staff function. If it doesn't fit the 75% rule, it goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals and then it comes to this body.
Okay, before you go on, or before Roger answers, recently, we had something that did come to the committee, though. And the attorney for that resident, okay, all of a sudden brought up this 75% rule, and they were looking for a variance.
I can explain, I can explain it, because I don't think Mary was here for that. That difference was just the attorney, in the example Mary gave with the Lot B, it says a 70-foot width lot. If that person was before the city council, technically, he should be asking for a 30-foot variance, because it's a 100-foot requirement, and he's a 70-foot lot, so he needs 30 feet of variance. What Mr. Breen was doing was saying, under your 75% rule, the lot only needs to be 75, 75 feet. And my lot's 70, therefore, he's saying, the variance I need is only five feet under the 75% rule, when actually, it's a 30-foot variance. And so, he was trying, his argument, artfully so for his client, was, the variance I need is only inches if you start with the 75% rule as a standard. And that's just an interpretation of how we want to do it.
Right.
Okay.
But my follow-up question is, Mary, if your lot, your example A with Lot A is 92 feet, did, does the homeowner have to own that lot back in 1960, or whenever we adopted our code, for it to fall under the 75% rule? Or if I'm Joe Byer, who buys that lot, let's say from the church, or whoever, and it's 92 feet, I know that the current code is 100. Could I still fall under 75% rule, because I bought it under the current code?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know people have bought, in reliance, lots of record that meet that 75% rule. And if we all sudden eliminated it, like, there was discussion at one meeting, we're kind of really harming those people, because they've relied on this up until this point.
Right. I wouldn't recommend elimination of the 75% rule, because that rule really does allow some recognition that you had lots of record that existed prior to the adoption of your zoning code. We know now, we've got lots that we're dealing with now, that to make them buildable, we either have to grant variances, or I know that the council is considering an overlay district to recognize that we have some substandard lots of record. So, I think the 75% rule plays a very important function. When I talked with John Forrest and Roger Noick the other, the other week about this, we've had, I think even within the past, what, six months, six properties, five or six properties that came in, fell within the 75% rule. So, they were able to be granted the building relief they sought by your staff, rather than having to go through the process of the Zoning Board of Appeals and making their, making their argument for variance. Didn't John say it was five, somewhere around there?
Right around a half dozen. And in years past, a few more than that, too. But it seems like within the last 12 to 14 months, we've had more than previously.
Okay. Alderman Shaki?
75%. Who came up with 75? Why isn't it 80%? Why isn't it 65%? Is there, is there any rule, is there anything in there saying that, well, it's a narrower lot, so the house should be a little smaller? There's nothing there, they always ask for the variance, so they can put the big, great big house on a substandard lot.
Well, if you, I'm sorry, if you fit within the 75% rule, then what that means is you're, and I should, actually, Roger's going to be better at this than I am, but if it's a 75-foot lot, your side yards, they're still going to be within the same proportional boundary, because your side yard, and correct me if I'm wrong, your side yards are going to be seven and a half feet. If you were a 100-foot lot, they'd be 10 feet. So, proportionally-wise, you still have to have the same side yard to the structure on the property. So, the house, the house should look proportional to the lot.
It just doesn't, to me, it doesn't make any sense to have a rule and then say, well, let's give them an extra 25%. Just because, I mean, if we're going to have 100-foot lots, and if we don't have an overlay system in place, then it should be 100 foot. What is the 75% stuff? I just, all it does is confuse things and allows contractors to put up larger houses and smaller lots. So, all it's doing is making somebody else money.
They still have to fit, any house that's constructed, though, has to fit within the building code and the city's zoning code requirements.
But they're not, because we're giving them an extra 25%. So, it's not fitting within the actual code. This is an addendum that I think should be thrown out, that maybe it had some reason for it originally, but I don't think it does anymore with the size of the houses they're putting up.
Well, that's a decision of the council, but I, I do believe that it serves a very useful purpose in the city by recognizing that the city, as other municipalities throughout, DuPage County, if not out throughout the state of Illinois, you do have lots that are lots of record that don't fit merely because the zoning that came in after the lot was of record. And if you wanted every homeowner to come in and request a variance, and you've had a lot of those lately, too, and maybe it's a reflection of financing rates or desire to live in Wooddale drives it as well. But you've had a lot of homeowners lately who have been wanting to do things to their homes, and because of the way the code is written, they're having to ask for variances.
Because, well, they should, really. I still think we should do away with that 75% rule.
Alderman Suback?
Roger, going back to the example with the R1, that requires a 10,000-square-foot lot. So, if the lot was 75 feet wide in the R1 zoning, and it was 7,500 square feet, that lot would meet the 75% rule and would now be a buildable lot. You've got 75% of the lot width, and you've got 75% of the lot square footage.
But 75% of the square footage on R1 would be 14,000.
I'm sorry, okay. But now, now they go to build, just, I'm following what Alderman Shaki said, now they go to build and they can only cover 35%. They can only cover 35% of their lot, they can't cover 35% of an R1 standard lot. So, their house, I think it will be smaller, because if, if they had the bigger lot in that R1 district, the full size, they go 35% of that coverage. And now that they're actually smaller, they can only go 35% of their lot size.
You're absolutely correct. That's, that is the, the final lot area dimension is what, is whereby the 35% lot coverage would come into effect. If I could just add something with regard to this 75% rule, I certainly was not around here when this was developed, but I think part of the reasoning behind this is the fact that the majority of lots of record, excuse me, within the city of Wooddale were plotted way prior to the ordinance. And also, too, that's also coupled with the fact that in so many instances we find, these dwellings are not basically centered on the lot whereby you would have this equidistant side yards. Some are turned, some are moved a little bit over to the east or to the west. And there was no, at that time, there were no rules, regulations requiring them to, to actually have a surveyor or an engineer site the foundation upon that property. So, that's why in many instances, we have differing side yards. You might have five and a half feet on one side, and you might have six and three-quarter feet on the other side. It's just because of the way the house was placed upon the property. But Alderman Suback is quite correct in the fact that the 75% rule, when enacted with regard to lot area, is still going to determine the same type of 35% lot coverage. It's not going to go above that.
I have a question for you, Mary. And I, I'm pretty sure I understand, but I want to make sure I do. On the document that you gave us, so that we receive tonight, under B, where it says, "Any single lot or parcel of land held in one ownership, which was of the record at effective date of ordinance 1250," okay, "and not thereafter held in contiguous ownership that does not meet the requirements, blah, 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 blah." Anyway, my question, it has to do with held in one ownership. Can you clarify that specifically? I mean, I heard with Alderman Suback, you said earlier, if, if it was a lot of, legal lot of record at the time your ordinance was passed, automatically, automatically, you can apply this rule? Even if it changed, that property's changed hands 10 times?
The way I have interpreted this, when I have looked at this, it talks about held in contiguous ownership. That means in ownership with, with a land immediately adjacent. If you had two substandard lots, and you owned both of them, and by, through the combination of the lots, you could make a buildable lot that meets the requirements of the district, this rule wouldn't apply. But this rule says, if you own, if you own a freestanding lot, your own lot, and no contiguous lot, and your lot doesn't meet the requirements of the district, but it was of record, and it's within 75% of those regulations, you can be recognized as a permitted lot.
Okay, so, so it could have transferred 20 times?
It could have.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mayor Johnson?
Just to clarify, when you first explained it, and as Roger subsequently further exemplified, the 75% rule only applies to front footage and lot square footage. Does not apply to the setback off the street and does not apply to side yards.
The 75% rule, what the 75% rule says is that if that particular lot does not meet the requirements for minimum lot width and/or area, but it's within 75% of that district, it'll be a permitted lot. What'll happen, then, is, as Roger explained, your lot area has to be no less than 1,400 square, if you're talking R1, your lot area can't be less than 1,400 square feet, you're 14,000 square feet, thank you. You're, if you're a 75-foot lot, your side yards can't be less than seven and a half feet on either side. So, that, everything will be sized.
I understand that. I guess to be more specific, when we start talking about setbacks off the street, 30 feet, this does not apply, that you can be 75% of 30 feet. Or if that new side yard is seven and a half feet, we can't be, you're not talking about 75% of the seven and a half feet. That's fixed.
No, that's correct, yes. And the building li, the building line stays the same, footage back from the street. It doesn't go 75% of that.
That was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure everybody else was on the same page, that the only thing we're talking about is the front footage of the lot and the total square footage of the lot.
Well, it also relates to the side yard.
Well, the side yards are automatically adjusted to whatever the front footage is. But we're not talking about a 75% credit, or 25% credit on the side yard.
Okay. Alderman Coles?
All right. I got a 50-foot lot. All right?
What zoning district are you in?
No, 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 no. I'm assuming, I got a 50-foot lot.
Okay.
All right? And it's R1 around us. So, in other words, all I need is five feet on each side of the lot.
No, your 50-foot lot, if it's 50 feet at the building lot, that isn't even a permitted lot in the R1. So, if you want.
If the area is R1, and there's houses next to me, R1 on a 50-foot lot, that means I cannot build, because even though this one is 50, is a 50-foot lot, and it's an R1 rating, and there's one on this side that's an R1 rating, I still can't build a house? You're telling me that in this rule here, that I can't get the 75%?
You would have. Why? You would have to apply for a variance.
All right, I'd, I'd apply for a variance.
Okay, and if you made application for your variance, and the Zoning Board of Appeals granted the application for variance, that recommendation for the grant of the variance would come to the city council, and the city council would need to approve it. If the city council didn't approve it, you would not be able to build.
All right, then I'd hire this Breen guy and, and have him come here and argue and get it passed. Okay? All right, that's what I wanted to know.
I was going to say, a good advertisement for Attorney Breen.
Okay, is anybody else? Does everybody, is everybody okay, then? I'm hearing nothing else, then I'd like to move on. The next we have is the items to be considered in future meetings. These are the zoning fee increase, housing code implementation policies and procedures, rezoning recommendation to include overlay districts. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Alderman Wesley?
I'd like the update on the rental property inspection, or is that under the house, housing code?
It is, it's under the house.
It's all going to be under that?
Correct.
Okay, and then I would like the update on the overcrowding, what we have done since we passed that policy, and where we stand on that.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman Suback?
Why did, didn't we pass the zoning fee increases already? My question is, why did it have to go to the zoning board?
The, what we passed were building fee increases under the building code, which is Chapter 12. Zoning fee increases are contained within Chapter 10, which is the zoning code. When you're making any revision to the zoning code, it has to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning fee increases recommended did go before the Zoning Board of Appeals. They had a hearing, there were some questions to Mr. Noick in regard to some of the records. They had a hearing, there were some questions to Mr. Noack in regard to some of the recommended, recommended fees. The Zoning Board is expected to address that issue again at its August meeting.
Is it normal for a municipal code or city code to have the fees contained within the zoning?
I can't tell you whether it's normal or not. I can tell you that it is in Wooddale, those fees are contained within the zoning code.
Because, to me, that's more of a financial issue that we need to address during budget time, and I think the Zoning Board, they do a good job of what they do, but for them to be arguing fees, and having this kicked around now for two meetings with them, we're losing fees from a city point of view, and I thought, that's something we should pass and be done with, and, you know, after they get done with it, we should change and eliminate it from that part of the zoning code, and put it into a fee structure code.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may recall, during the budget hearings, we had discussed the updating of these fees and where they should be located, and staff had proposed that these be located within an addendum, or in some document, not specifically tied to an ordinance, whereby then, if you decide to increase the fees, you don't have to go through this month, a month-and-month-long process in order to do this, and that particular action is taken by quite a few communities.
Okay, Mayor Johnson?
Actually, this was a good catch by the Zoning Board, so if you could explain to the council what they found. As I understand it, somebody like Pulte comes in for a hundred and twenty homes, he pays a lesser fee than somebody with like a six-lot subdivision, is what they were concerned about. And I think that's a good catch.
Well, I think one of the, Roger, do you want to address their concern?
I wish I had my paperwork with me, but, but basically, they did have certain concerns, and this coming August twenty-first, a ZBA meeting, we are going to be addressing those specific issues. We're going to have a presentation that night, in other words, answering the questions and concerns that they had, and then all of that information will then be forwarded to the PZB Committee.
I think, as acting chairman tonight of this committee, what I would like to do is, I would like it on, not only would I like these fee increases on, but I would like for discussion to have the committee authorize moving this out of the zoning, and moving it into, you know, doing the addendum, so that we don't have to go through this, or future councils don't have to go through this. I mean, we should have probably done this a couple of months ago, so.
Another item, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One of the things that was passed out tonight, and I thought we got this once before, but it's a proposal for